Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, July 8th, 2025. We're meeting at 6:30 PM in the Harry Butters Selectmen's Chamber, Norwood Town Hall, 566 Washington Street in Norwood, Mass. We will start our meeting with our traditional Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silent Reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we have an appointment, we have a public hearing, and then several items on new business. I'm going to start with some of our procedural things. Our public hearing isn't until 7:00. So we'll start off with warrant signature updates, meeting review, and approved warrant reports signed by the board's representative. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Mr. Donnelly. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lane, who I think I heard first there. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous. Second item, meeting minutes for approval of the board.
Move the approval of the minutes as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Donnelly. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous. I don't know, is Mr. O'Neill out there yet?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. So we can probably start with him because I don't think that he'll need the full half hour.
Madam Chair, Mr. O'Neill is ready to join us.
Thank you. Have a seat. Yeah, yeah. We're popular tonight. Thank you. And just for the benefit of the public record, if you can remind everyone your name and your role, and then we can get right to it.
Sure. Good evening. Jeff O'Neill, Director of Finance and Town Accountant for the town. So I'm here to talk about the year-end budget transfers.
Excellent. Well, why don't we go ahead and then we'll follow up with questions if we have any.
Okay, thank you. So just, you do have an updated memo and sheet on your desk, so there are four transfers. Just tend to give you a little prelude to the year-end closing. Revenue looks to be stronger than budget and expenses are under budget. So all in all, it's a good story, but we do have four line items to address in these transfers tonight. So the first one is treasure expenses. This is a case where bad news is good news. We have increased expenditures for our billing collection agents, but that in turn means that we've collected more revenue, so above budget. So that's for $65,000. The second one is in elections expenses. Again, we had additional elections this year with the printing, mailing of ballots. The town clerk's office had other expenses that exceeded budget. Again, that was offset by extra state aid payments in the amount of $23,000. So again, that one's okay. We did get more money from the state. The next one is the snow and ice removal. Again, we did have this at town meeting. Unfortunately, the last payroll hit after we were prepared to make that adjustment, so there's an additional request here. Again, within the contracted services in the snow and ice removal, so we did not use all of the contracted services. We used internal labor, so that's why that request is there. And then final is the waste removal. I think we've kind of telegraphed this one. There is a contract pricing has increased, but also the amount of waste has increased as well. So that has been adjusted to $196,000. And again, all those can be, on the budget detail sheet, all those can be transferred within those categories, so there's no reserve fund transfer and there's no deficit funding per se.
All right. We'll open it up. Two questions are coming forward. Mr. Donnelly?
On, Mr. O'Neill, so on the expenses for snow and ice removal, salaries, it's the overtime due to DPW employees, I assume?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, but not contractual?
Correct. It's all, it's salaries, yes. Overtime salaries.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Do we suspect that the waste removal numbers are just going to keep getting worse each year?
I believe, Tony, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think this was the biggest year of the increase in there, so, but we certainly probably expect.
Yeah.
The whole, I think the world has changed, right? Work from home still. There's a lot more garbage being thrown out, so.
Yeah, we're still in the process of sort of making sure. There's two factors. There's the price we pay, and that's going up every year. And I think this is the big year. We've got a couple of years left where we're still going up six or seven percent just on that price. So it's, sometimes we're going to match the price to the volume.
But it's tonnage too, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So I don't foresee a world where it's not going to be going up five to seven percent a year in perpetuity.
Yeah.
I just, I could be wrong. I can't predict the world. And then the offset we sometimes get for recyclable materials is deducted by what our contamination rate is, and those rates kind of flux as well. So I think we're here to see this. With this number in particular, we want to try to make sure we're monitoring this fiscal year. DPW has a plan to do it to really try to look at our monthlies and compare our monthlies and see if our tonnage estimates are accurate.
So we're looking at it every month?
Yeah.
Great.
May I just to, yeah, we have, you and I and Mr. Ryan were on the committee that negotiated the contracts. I pulled out the rates and, yes, FY '24 was a 20% increase in curbside collection. In the previous year, '23 was a 17% increase. But now we're looking at, the contract was really front-loaded, so the rate increases for curbside solid waste collection are moderated, that's the right word to use, as compared to 17 and 20%. The next three years, we're looking at eight, 8.5, and 9% increases for the rate, tonnage rate for curbside collection. Not great, but certainly the big hits, I think, were like the earlier fiscal years of the five-year contracts. So hopefully, hopefully this coming, this coming fiscal year, well, we won't see quite the need to transfer money into that account, but we'll wait and see.
That was really helpful information, Mr. Donnelly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. We always get to trash talk.
When was that contract signed?
Unless you were going into the third year of a five-year contract?
We're in the third year.
We're, we're, the fiscal year we're currently in, I believe, is that the third year of the contract?
Okay. So we knew the amount, so it's not a contractual increase. Maybe the haul, maybe the estimate of how much tonnage we're hauling is the problem.
That's what, that's what we're really looking at, is the tonnage. We know the increase, but the tonnage is a little bit harder to.
And we budget enough based on our best estimate on tonnage.
We think for this coming year, we're in better shape, but we're going to start monitoring monthly. We did see an increase the first year or two of COVID with so many people being home and then so many people working from home. It's an unanticipated, relatively minor, but still impactful impact to the overall tonnage. It's just gone up in town. Absent population, because remember, we don't pick up from the large apartment complexes. We've had one or two condo complexes in the last couple of years. We have three have turned over trash collection to the town. Not significant, but still an increase of a couple thousand dollars here or there. But the tonnage is the, is the challenge.
I have a question, but it doesn't have to do with this. Jeff, if I may, when do you expect the books to be closed for last fiscal year?
Well, DOR standards is July 15th. We have to get everything done. But we'll still, yeah, we still have, yeah, there'll still be some record-keeping and some adjusting of the accounts. So we're probably looking at mid-August. We'll get our balance sheet into DOR.
Any kind of sense of estimate of how we're doing with how much to be turned back?
Yeah, I'd hate to give you a number right now and then come back and, you know, with my tail between my legs and say that was wrong, but like I said, we're probably two or three percent over on revenue and probably around that three percent level under on budget. So, you know, five or six million back into kind of your standard, your standard free cash number, if I just have to do a ballpark estimate right now.
Great. Thank you.
Anything further, Madam Chair? Nothing further from me. It was all pretty straightforward looking. The only thing that I was not clear on is do you need a specific action from us tonight? Or is this more informational? If you need us to do an action, then I'll happily interject.
Correct. We do need a vote and action, and then the signature on page. Back to me.
All right. There's any further discussion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the four end-of-year budget transfers across departmental budget lines. They're expected meetings on July, and July 10th.
All right. Motion made by Mr. Lane. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Donnelly. Any further discussion? Otherwise, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous. All right, we'll have those decided.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
You too. All right. So we are still have time before the hearing, so let's get into new business. We'll go through and see which things we would prefer to hold. So I'll go down our list here. As a reminder, if you see an item that you would like further discussion on, just say hold, and I'll set it aside. And otherwise, everything that doesn't get held will be approved in one motion. So start with item 4.1. This is the disabled veterans' park used by a community church for July 17th. Item 4.2, another disabled veterans' park used for a family reunion. Item 4.3, one-day liquor permit for Perry Siegel. This is for a charity at the Elks. And 4.4, block party request at Valley Road, and that is for August 17th. Item 4.5, I'm going to hold.
Hold.
Yep.
We need to take action now.
Yep. And item 4.6, I was planning to hold. Item 4.7, this is the draft license agreement regarding FM Global Way. This is about potentially putting a sign.
Will I hold that? I have one quick question on that.
Yep. So we'll hold that. Item 4.8 is contracts. It's the full list of contracts. All right. And item 4.9, which is cemetery deeds. All right. So with that, do I have a motion for approval on the items that were not held? That would be 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.8, and 4.9.
So move.
Made by Mr. Plasko. I thought I heard a second from Mr. Sad. Okay, Mr. Lane. Second by Mr. Lane. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous. So that takes care of all of these. Why don't we start with what I believe will be a short one, which is item 4.5, because I think we can get it done before 7:00. So item 4.5, as my letter indicated, what I'm looking for is clarity, so there's no question from the ABCC. If they're looking back at the record or looking back at the reporting of the meeting, that they're certain they understood the board's position. And so the idea would be, we would be potentially taking a vote tonight in order to make sure there's no chance of it getting kicked back to us from the ABCC for lack of clarity.
Thank you. Yeah, we do want to clean this up. I agree with the chair. They, I know just speaking for myself, was misunderstood what action we took. I thought it had been seconded. It was a two-to-two vote. In fact, it had failed for lack of a second, which means we haven't really closed the loop on this matter, so we should be taking it up. Also, I made a comment that I want to clarify or correct, I guess. I always like to correct them when I can. I had made a comment about the counter service and the, having negotiated that there would be, in fact, table service instead of a counter service, and I was mistaken. I was thinking of a different establishment at that time, had them confused. And this establishment had, Mr. Donnelly and I had both questioned about the bar and the counter. And with the response I got, that it was going to be a bar, not a counter, and manned by a bartender, I think I assumed at that point it was going to be like a restaurant, table service, but that was my own assumption. Nobody, nobody presented that. All that being said, I did not vote in favor this last time, and I'm still opposed. I just don't think it's the best use of our liquor licenses. I think we want to go to the larger restaurants to bring them into town, full service. This isn't, isn't full service. It's a smaller place. I just don't think it's the best use of what we have our licenses for.
Further, I know Mr. Lane was not here at the time, so if you had any comments you want to add.
Yeah, so I was absent for that meeting. I have viewed the tape. Procedurally, I assume that since no action was taken, I can participate. But the hearing is closed, correct?
Correct.
You, excuse me, I believe you updated yourself on the application and.
Yes.
And watched the film, so you could participate.
Yes.
And no action was taken, so we're on the floor for clean motions. Anyone can make a motion.
But there, there is not an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant.
The hearing is closed.
Hearing is closed.
Okay, that's what I thought. So I think based on what I gathered to be a transaction to acquire the restaurant, for one reason or another, the transfer of the license at the time didn't happen. The applicant tried to make that happen before it lapsed. It did lapse at the end of the calendar year. So basically, operating without the license that they had hoped to have, it goes back to the town, right?
Mm-hmm.
So it's available. When the previous owner applied for this license, I was on the board. I don't think Mr. Sad was.
I'm not sure.
I don't think I was.
Yeah, so it was a different board.
Just the two of us.
Yeah, so. But I, I remember thinking, I didn't really have an issue with the size. I thought the size was adequate enough for, for the license. I didn't necessarily have a problem with the setup in terms of tables and access and counter access, that sort of thing. Long story short, I was in favor of a license operating out of that space. Previously, I'd be in favor of it now. So if we were to take a vote, I would vote in the affirmative. And I think, you know, it's unfortunate that, I think the previous owner of this business said that this license would like put them over the top and they would stay. That obviously didn't happen. So that gives me a little bit of concern, but I don't think that necessarily has anything to do with how the new owner operates. And I think with the track record of some of the partners there, especially with 1947 being a well-established restaurant, doing very well, having a good reputation, I think that kind of knowledge about how to run a restaurant could be helpful. And I put my faith in something like that. So it's not the best location, but, you know, it's, it's good enough for me. So I would vote in the affirmative.
Mr. Donnelly?
Oh, okay. All right. So, you know, at the last, at the hearing, I was the one to put forward the motion to approve it. And I remain in support of the all-alcohol-on-premises license for this applicant, echoing some of the rationale that Mr. Lane has indicated. I wasn't on the board when the prior applicant was awarded the license, but I didn't really see any substantial change from the new operators, from their operations for the, you know, identity dimension change from the prior ownership. So I don't see the operation as being significantly different from the prior applicant to this. In fact, they, they seem fairly identical. I agree. I think the presentation of the application itself was pretty, was, was well-crafted. The management and the ownership team have really good credentials and experience. Mr. Lane has indicated the connection to 1947 here in Norwood, but ownership also has interest in a couple of similar operations, restaurants in the Seaport. So I think this is, I think this team is well-equipped to work well with this license. It is a food establishment and located on Route 1. It's a, it's a major commercial district for the town, so I would be inclined if we, if we do vote on the application, that I think I would vote in support of granting the license. Thank you.
Mr. Sad?
I gotta go see things that bill alcohol. It's a tough corner to get up on the hill, unfortunately. It's not a big restaurant. Our job as select people is to do the fiduciary responsibility for the taxpayers. We're in tough financial straits coming in the next year or two. And let's say a hotel wants to come to know what our factor mutual, $660 million college wants a restaurant on their bottom floor. We won't have anything to give to them. I mean, we're going to get the revenue, and I believe, quarter percent or whatever that number is off the food and the alcohol. And I think we're just tying our hands for the, the risk reward for a 32-seat restaurant versus a 200 or 300-seat restaurant that show if we might come in next week, next month. We don't know that answer. But I just think that there's a liquor license there, full one. There'll be another full one right here. It's a tough corner to get out of. What do we get in return for it? And then eventually, they'll probably just sell it like the lady that was there before, and we have nothing on our hands. I think we have to think really hard about these liquor licenses of people getting them and just getting their hands on them to sell them, and then we're just left in the loop. So I'm against it, and we'll see where it goes.
Just, I don't believe she sold it, right? We just got it back in return?
Correct.
They returned it to the town.
Okay.
I think there was, excuse me, I think somehow it got lost in the, in the business deal. It wasn't part of it. It usually is, so it came back to the town.
Yeah, I mean, that's, right. I wish they had just.
Yeah, we were lucky.
Taken care of that cleanly.
We were lucky.
Originally.
And just, just as a matter of clarification, Christine, could you confirm how many all-on-premises liquor licenses the town has currently?
Two.
Two, okay.
Both on this agenda.
Correct. All right. Further discussion or action?
Just, what are the two restaurants? Well, people have the full big ones.
Those are two available, that's what we're saying.
Oh, we have two available?
Right.
Okay.
They're both on the agenda for tonight, this one and the other one, yeah. Okay. That's it, Madam Chair.
And again, the goal is to have clarity for the ABCC. Whether it's up or down, they should be able to know what the board's position was. Chair is still not in favor. The volume, the proximity to other businesses, I just don't see how it's going to get full use. So I still remain not in favor. But I'm willing to second a motion for the purpose of proceeding.
I can do that.
Okay.
You didn't make a motion yet, did you?
Correct.
I did not. Okay. I will make a motion, I want to say this correctly, to approve the application for an all-alcohol liquor license for the Yero and Kebab House.
All right. Motion made by Mr. Lane. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Opposed. So two in favor, three opposed. Motion fails. Mr. Plasko?
I think, not quite sure of the right process here, but I think since the denial is what carried, we might want to state for the record and for the motion specifically the reasons, because if the applicant chooses to appeal, the ABCC is going to look to see, just as they did in the last one, the appeal we had, that we didn't act arbitrarily, appreciably, considered different factors, and we should be stating clearly for the record what those are, not just to vote against.
I think in the letter, doesn't that accomplish that?
Yes.
It does. It'd be helpful if the board mentions it. And I know it might sound like it's too much parliamentary procedure, but the board could also just affirmatively vote to deny the license, just so that's the action that vote 3-2 the other way. I know you just said no, but just so there's no, so there's absolute clarity as to what the board's action is. And if somebody made a motion to deny, and then that passes 3-2, the board has denied the license. List your reasons. That goes in the letter. And we're as technically clear as we can.
That's what I was trying to say.
So if I could get a motion with the.
Kind of a positive motion.
Positive motion to deny.
Positive and negative motion. I move, if I may, Madam Chair, to deny the license based on the determination from the application and testimony at the hearing that, in our board's opinion, the applicant, application does not sufficiently provide enough public good and benefit in considering all the factors and the number of other licensed establishments within the immediate area, the lack of table service and other amenities that we just think is a problem for the use of a full liquor license on premises, and therefore deny the license.
Motion made by Mr. Plasko.
Is there something you want to add?
No, I'm seconding it.
Seconded by Mr. Sad. All right. So this would be, and all in favor would be to approve denial. So all in favor.
To deny the license.
Yeah. Denied based on those reasons.
All in favor of denial, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. So three for denial, two against denial. And then if we could update the language of our letter to make sure it captures that motion. All right. So we have five minutes until the hearing. I think we could probably get memoranda done really quick, just to get it out of the way. Yes. Oh, 4.10. That is the.
Block party.
Yes. Okay. 4.10 block party. Oh, sorry. I thought I had a printout of that. So we had, thank, there we go. So we had a late agenda item. This is a block party request for Greenwich Road for July 16th. They're looking for 2:00 PM till 8:00 PM, and it would be a closure starting from number 24, which would extend to number 44. And this is from Victoria Stivaleta.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I will motion to approve with stipulation, as we normally do, that the organizers do notify abooters and that the police department be notified in terms of the date and place of the block party.
Mm-hmm.
Police and fire.
Police and fire. Thank you, Mr. Plasko.
Police and fire. All right. All right. Motion made to approve with stipulation of notifying the abooters and also notifying police and fire. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Plasko. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous. Okay, that takes us to 6:55 by the internet's clock.
Do you have time to take care of 4.6, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So 4.6, this is the, discussing a vacancy for Norwood Airport Commission. The manager would like to.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the members, Mick Harper, who had been on the airport commission, had let us know he's stepping down. His family is taking him. He's trialed, be moving overseas temporarily. What I'd recommend the board do, since it's the board's appointment, if you so choose, is we'll put the position out there like we do with our other board and committee positions, stake interest for the next week or two weeks. Appoint somebody for the board. We'll work with myself and Mr. Sheen, the Chair of the Airport Commission. We'll hopefully bring somebody that we recommended to the board for your August 12th meeting. The airport commission's not meeting in July. They can be flexible with their August schedule. If they had to have two members, they could. If we had to appoint somebody in interim, we could, but they'll be fine for the next, call it five weeks, while we get a posting out there, get a couple letters of interest. Historically, there have not been a lot, so I don't, could be wrong. I don't think we'll be waiting through a pool of 50 or 60 people, but you never know. And then we can get that position filled for an August timeframe.
Great. So it's good. Motion to approve the manager's recommendation?
Second.
On, on the motion, I think if we just get ahold of our veterans' agent, that we got some airplane pilots or anybody in the military that can jump step forward a little bit, that would help. That's just that way.
Do a little outreach. Yeah, that's probably good. All right. So we have a motion made by Mr. Plasko to go with the manager's recommendation, seconded by Mr. Lane. Any further discussion? Otherwise, I will say, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous.
Madam Chair, if I could just.
Yes.
Just indirectly, Mr. Manager, I know that we've, we've transitioned our way of recruiting people for committees to rely less on the talent bank, actually eliminate the talent bank, and we've gone to posting in social media and such for notifying citizens of those vacancies. Are we having a success with that? I mean, it's early, but is it has, just interested in whether or not that's, that we're having success with that particularly new approach.
We certainly are. We interviewed three people last week for one spot on the Conservation Commission. Going to be appointing one of those individuals, and another one was also interested in sustainability, so I think I'll be able to reel them in there. So, so far, so good. Some committees are generally more apt to get some interest than others, but so far, so good.
All right. Thank you.
Excellent.
Excellent. All right. So that has brought us to 7:00 PM. So we can invite in those that are interested in the public hearing. If they can't all fit, if there's any further folks in the hall, what we can do is, we'll probably just have people in batches, if anybody's specifically looking for public comment. We good? Okay, great. So if I could impose on you to read into the record our notice. impose on you to read into the record our notice. Thank you. And just for the board, so you're aware, we did get the list of notified abutters. We also had letters from the public that were sent in. We had one that was new today, the one that was included in your packet, and then the prior ones that were also submitted. What was the total number that we received? Do you happen to know?
There were thirty, thirty-seven changes of support. I had received one this morning, one yesterday, and one middle on Saturday.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, welcome.
Hi, thank you.
So for the benefit of the public record, if you could introduce yourselves, and then feel free to present your information, and then afterwards we'll have some Q and A with the board members.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Madam Chair, members of the select board, in your capacity as the licensing board. My name's Dennis Quinte. I'm an attorney at the firm of McDermott Quinte, Miller and Hanley, 28th State Street, Boston. Here representing the applicant before you tonight. With me is Christopher Crone, here to my left, who's the co-owner and the proposed manager of record. We are before you, of course, to request the issuance of one of the licenses that have, I suppose, somewhat recently become available in the town. The applicant entity has been in operation at the, at this site since 2023, including in December of that year, receiving zoning approval from the zoning Board of Appeal. And I will note for the record that at that hearing, the application for an alcohol license was made known to the Board of Appeal members, so presumably when they voted upon it, they voted on it with that knowledge. So, from a zoning perspective, we're lawfully in business. They have also, as this board certainly knows, have applied for them and granted some 30-odd one-day pouring licenses since, in the time they've been in business. And again, for the record, I'd just like to note that, to our knowledge, there's no violation history, no police reports, no incidents regarding sale and service of alcohol in a negative manner that, you know, they brought to pass, if you will. We think, quite the contrary, they've been a, very much a family-friendly operation. As you certainly must know, they are, they take in dozens, if not scores, of children's parties, family events, private events, things of that nature over, over the years they've been in business. And that's really a mainstay of their business, and we'd like to suggest that as the, I think it's now 40 letters, if I'm adding correctly, of support, many of them, if not all of them, from people who have utilized the premises for their children's birthday parties or for a family event or something like that. So, I think they have a, a good track record of operation in the town of Norwood, and they certainly would continue that if, if they are granted this license. Another bit of history that the board should know, if you don't already, they have recently, in the last probably six months or so, been issued a license in the town of Northampton. They were welcomed, if you will, to, to that town, and are doing very well there, and fully supported by the various town facilities and public service groups and things of that nature. They do the same kind of business in Northampton that they have done in Norwood for the last couple of years. The, I do want to make it clear, our operating hours are different from the hours within which we would be, we would serve alcohol. By that, I mean, I know at the last hearing, back a couple of years ago, or eighteen months ago, was the question about when they would be able to serve alcohol, and the notes in the minutes reflect that it was a midnight, I mean, a noon, no earlier than noon was the request made. We are following that request. The hours of operation to be open are as follows, if I may just quickly recite, would be Monday through Thursday, noon to 9:00 PM. Friday and Saturday, 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Sunday, 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. But on both the Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, no alcohol service before noon, which we hope complies with the requests that were made at the, at the last hearing. So although they'd be open for their arcade business, they would not serve alcohol until noon on any day they're, they're open for business. Excuse me, I don't want to break your train of thought, but did I hear you right? Did you say Sunday, 10 o'clock, open? 10 o'clock open, but not for service of alcohol. Thank you, sorry. No worries. The, I just want to, I did lose... I'm sorry. That's okay. So, oh, Christopher has a lengthy experience in the sale and service of alcoholic beverages, which he can recount. He is also going to tell you that all servers will be tip certified, you know, if, as and when we are, we are lucky enough to be licensed.
Speak up a little bit.
Yeah, my voice is a little dry too, so, and, and he'll be happy to answer those questions about his background, his experience. He's a, he's a U.S. citizen, he's a past president. And I think, and as I know, he'll speak for himself, but on the question of food service, which I know came up last time, but this is not a CB application, this is a general on-premise, but to explain the service of food, or how food is presented at the premises, the owner of 1A Pizza is here with us tonight to testify as to the relationship between his business and, and the license, and the...
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. And the licensee, proposed licensee entity. So, he can certainly explain that. I think that is the bulk of our presentation. Again, we just, we think it's a viable, valid, family-friendly business that's really done well in Norwood, done well by Norwood, and we think that, as shown by the letters of support, you know, the citizens of the town are by and large supportive of this entity. Just on another side, as I heard the last description of, this, this capacity is in excess of 200, 200...
282.
282. So it's not a 30-seat operation. And again, we, we've tried to address issues that were raised in the first hearing in a positive way, and just try to say, okay, this is, we can do business this way. We think it's, it's been successful and positive, and people have enjoyed it and liked it, and we'd like to have the opportunity to continue. And if I may, Madam Chair, just present Mr. Crone to introduce...
Good evening, everybody. So I'm co-owner and general manager of the arcade. Just a little bit about me. I've been, I started bartending in Joe, August of 2000, so I've been doing this for twenty, almost 25 years. Kind of worked all over, Boston for a bulk of it, Hawaii, Alaska, Los Angeles. So I would be overseeing the bar program at the arcade. So I bring a lot of experience to the table, and that's, that's pretty much it.
Just explain your thoughts about the tips training for staff.
Oh, yeah, sorry. We would get, we would have a, a session, a class session, where we get an instructor in, and then everybody on our staff, and if we were to hire for the positions of bartending, we would have a trainer come in and, and run a class and get everybody certified right there, that day. So everybody that would be serving an alcoholic beverage will be tip certified. Yeah, yeah.
Excellent.
And as part of our presentation, would you like to hear from, about food service?
Yes.
About food availability?
Yes, thank you.
I am Spur Lucas.
Come on up and sit.
Come on up and sit, Chair.
My God, I'm moving.
Sorry.
My name is Spur Lucas, and I own 1A Pizza. I provide all the food for the arcade. They've been in town for approximately two years. They've been nothing but great, not only to our business, but into bringing other people into town. Like, a lot of people from the surrounding towns come because of them. So it's helping our business and also theirs, but it's, they're a great place to have, in Norwood. They're very highly recommended, great people, both Chris and Matt, they're unbelievable to work with. Nothing but good things to say about them.
You just described, just briefly, how, what, what takes place. If I come in, are there, are there menus at the arcade from your cell?
Yes.
And someone calls in?
They call the orders in, and then depending what they want, we, we'll deliver to them. So they give us a timetable. They'll either let us know ahead of time, and we'll prepare the food and deliver it a certain time. They had a big event with Apple. We, we catered their event, so it's, they bring in a lot of people into town. Like, we do all their food service. They just call us up, we prepare everything, and then they give us a specific time and we deliver it, so.
And then with the exception of Friday and Saturday, pretty much whenever we're open, these guys are open too. So, so food's available, pretty much, the entire time we're open.
And if I just wanted to question, do you, do your own staff do the deliveries?
Yes.
So there are no third-party?
No.
Guys on scooters running around?
No, no, just, no. We have, everybody has their automobiles. We insured, so this, my drivers all insured, you know, I pay for extra insurance for, for the drivers. That way, anything happens, so.
Excellent. All right. If there are no further presentation from the applicants, what I'll do now is I'll open it up to some questions, and then after some questions, we'll open it up to public comment. So we'll start with the board, if we have questions, comments. Mr. Lane?
Thank you for being here, we appreciate it. Chris, can you talk a little bit about how you staff, or how you have staffed the one-off events, when we've given you the one-day licenses?
It's me.
It's you?
Yeah, yeah, because I'm the only tip certified employee right, right now. So I, I bartend every event.
Okay, and so if, if the license were approved, you'd hire someone?
Oh, yeah.
You alluded to that?
Yeah.
Okay. How many staff, how, just one person, or, you know, have you thought?
I mean, the bar itself that we have is, is pretty small, so it would really only require one.
One person.
One person, yeah.
And then can you talk a little bit about, just for our own identification, how one of those events operates?
Oh, yeah, so it's different, it's a, it's a, they're all different. It would be, for the most part, it's, each person pays for their own drink. They come up, start a tab, or just pay cash, or, you know, one-offs, you know. Or if one person's paying, we'll start a big tab, and then there's the one payment. But everyone comes up to the bar, gets a drink, and then...
Yeah, okay, so that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
You're not going around to...
No, there's no, like, no, we don't have, like, waitstaff, or...
Right.
They come up to the bar.
You're just at the bar.
They get, yeah, they get ID'd from me, and then give in their drink, and they go play games, or stay at the bar, whatever.
That's a good point. I was, I was going to ask, in terms of checking identification, so you don't do that at the door, or do you?
I do it, no, we don't do it at the...
Just if someone orders?
Someone orders a drink, we do it, yeah.
To do that, they would have to go directly to you at the bar?
And if we had the permanent license, we would get technology.
Everything, yeah.
We would get a scanner. So, there's a lot of tricky things out there, and the scanners are, are great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In terms of some of the larger events that you may have held?
Yeah.
Maybe the Apple event, or...
Yeah, yeah.
How has parking worked?
Parking's fine. I mean, every space in front of the arcade that's not handicap, they can park in, and then...
And how many spaces are there?
Uh, I don't know the exact number of spaces.
Not, okay. Are you referring to the ones that sort of?
Just the ones that are in front of the building, because there's a, a big parking lot.
Right.
Towards the back.
So mostly people, if it's a larger event, they're parking down there?
Yeah, and then just, yeah, and then just walking up to the arcade, which is...
There haven't been any issues?
No.
I haven't heard of any.
Yeah, no, no, not at all.
Like, you alluded to, you know, I, I think the thing that, I'm thinking about consciously is that we've given you 30-plus of these one-day events.
Yeah.
And the actual events, you know, we haven't heard anything negative, or at least I haven't, if anything hasn't bothered the board, certainly not the police department, you know, and I think that bodes well for your application.
Yeah.
In my opinion, you know, that carries a lot of weight. I may have further questions, but I'll stop talking.
Very well. Further questions?
Thank you, too.
Yeah.
Thank you for, for the information and for the explanation. On the, you know, and I'm glad that you are talking about the, the food option. It is actually one of the reasons that I had some concerns with the initial application. I, I still may have some concerns going forward, but are the, are patrons allowed to bring in food that is, and they're allowed to bring their own food?
Yeah.
And if, if I'm not bringing my own food, if I'm not ordering from 1A Pizza, are there other options that you're providing?
Yeah, we have.
Prepackaged food?
Yeah, chips and candy, candy, and non-alcoholic beverages. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, that, that's my initial question, thanks.
My question is, is this, I've never been in it, but it's only 3,500 square feet?
Yeah.
In line, so I think it was 24,000, but they had a bunch of kids in there. We turned them down. And what, how many, what's the ratio of kids events versus Apple or adult events?
Uh, I mean, on the weekends, it's pretty high, the amount of kids that are in there. But, you know, they're all accompanied by adults.
Okay, and then, I guess my only, a couple of things was, you, somebody applied from your group to our group about the Norwood Nuggets banquet?
Yeah.
And the Walthall banquet, and it wasn't them that were having it? How'd that transpire?
No, it was, they were having it, but I guess we weren't listed on their list of events, I think, was the issue? So I don't know, I don't remember exactly who the contact was.
The issue is, we had two requests for one-day licenses for your establishment.
Yeah.
It's noting those two organizations.
Yeah.
And when we checked with those organizations, they had no plans to be having anybody at your establishment.
So, I mean, maybe it wasn't an official?
And then we were contacted, I was contacted, because she had a little contact from a young lady, was hoping that we could let them have the license instead of denying it, because she was in a hockey organization from Milton, which is not a problem in that, it just, it's from Milton.
Yeah.
Why were we told it was for Norwood and for Walthall?
The contact that we were dealing with represented themselves from those two hockey associations. So whether it was off the books, and it was just a bunch of parents getting together, wanting to have an outing, it could have been that. I, I don't know exactly how it wasn't, like, officially recorded in...
Well, you're running the place, you should have some control about who's applying on the huge facilities.
Right. I mean, I think we just assumed that...
You're not going to be responsible for...
Right, right. But that's my take on it, is that it, it just was a, kind of like a non-official team event, and it was a bunch of parents getting together, wanting to have an outing. So that's why you couldn't find it on their list of events.
Well, I don't know how long I'm going to be belaboring this, but for the record, that was the second time involving the Norwood Nuggets. That's why I was checked on, because of, after the first time, why would they be applying again? And on the first time, we checked, and it was a group of parents, not this organization.
Yeah.
But they absolutely were adamant, that they didn't want any alcohol, they hadn't asked for any alcohol, and at your establishment, asked for using their name, and they were quite upset about it.
I don't know any, anything about that, because we would never apply for a license unless our client asked us to.
And, I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt.
Oh, no, a couple of things, I'll let my senior member keep going, but I think the fact is that these people, I think, that live on that street, and that between you and the nightclub, having two liquor licenses down there, is just going to exacerbate the speeding, the danger of the kids in that condo. There's probably, I think, 100 units in that condo complex. There's a ton of kids that hang around down that area. I just think that when you're dealing with kids and alcohol, that's where trouble comes. And from the last hearing, we just had small items, small establishments versus big ones. These are premier, full liquor license, and I'm not sure if, if it warrants a full liquor license at this establishment, so that's that, Madam Chairman. license at this establishment, so, that's it, Madam Chairman.
Mr. Plasko, do you have further questions?
Yeah, several, I think, and comments. Could you explain to me, we had your application, we had the hearing, we denied it, was appealed to ABCC, total with, held up our denial?
Yeah.
So the question is, what's different? You're coming back, why should we be considering it any different than the conclusions we made last time? And one minor thing, so I just want to get them cleared up, is, have you changed your lease? Have you leased more square footage than you had previously?
No, currently, no.
Because your last application was for twenty-two thousand eight hundred eighty-eight square feet, and this one is for three thousand seven hundred and twenty-three square feet, roughly a thousand square feet difference. You didn't pick up any property?
Nope.
Okay. The other thing I want to ask some questions about, if I may, is, on this year's license, and it was talked about at the last one, but it wasn't actually stated on the application, I don't believe, is outdoor dining, or outdoor use. And you say you have an area of fifteen hundred square feet. And that abuts, if you're looking at the front door to the left?
It's, yeah, and there's like a little courtyard that we have tables in.
So...
But that's not necessarily gonna be used for drinking, that's up for...
So, how, how...
We would confine it more than likely to inside.
How do you intend, both inside and outside, to be operating this day-to-day?
As far as?
Well, it's, not having table service, you're not having a restaurant, you're not offering food, you're, bringing in food is not offering food. We have restaurant licenses, restaurant licenses have to be licensed under chapter one forty, and then you can have alcohol as well.
Yeah.
Under one thirty-eight. You haven't got a one forty license, you haven't applied for a one forty license. You said you're gonna put in, as I understood it, probably one bartender, counter service. So what's gonna happen after that? How is the area going to be controlled?
With signs and staff, no, no alcohol beyond this point?
What staff? The last, the last business plan you gave us was you're gonna have one person in the kitchen bartender, and one out in the floor, actually, you said two, I believe. I think I made the assumption it was one at a time, and a total of two. Maybe it was two at a time, and I'll be corrected on that.
You're busy at times, you need, there's more staff on.
So, you're gonna, last time you told us they were gonna be having seating at the games, you're gonna have cups, you're ordering more cups, holders, to have it right at the games.
And that's another thing, we're up to...
That's still part of your practice.
To work with you guys on. If you prefer the, the alcohol consumption to be just in the back room where the bar is, we would confine it to that, with signs that say, no alcohol beyond this point, and we would have people patrol. And if a, a drink did happen, a slip by, and we saw it abandoned, and a, you know, we'd throw it out.
First, I would prefer that than being out with the games, but...
Yeah, I mean, what's certainly, what...
But I have other concerns about the issuing of the license, specifically the food issues, and being properly licensed with a restaurant license.
Yeah.
The outdoor dining, though, how, how are you gonna maintain that, or outdoor use?
I mean...
You're gonna have someone inside at the bar at the far-right corner, and they're over the left, outside the building.
You mean outside with an alcoholic beverage?
Right.
Well, I mean, we're possibly gonna prohibit that as well, where the alcohol consumption would be just in that back room.
Because I don't see that that in any way meets the requirements of the ABCC for outdoor use. It needs to be continued to us, which it is, or it should be continued to us, which it is. But also, you're supposed to have clear direct view, and entrance and exit from that area. Your windows are blocked by the sheaves, the back door is locked, seal doesn't even have a handle on it, it says to use the front door.
You mean to get in?
How do you, how do you intend to be manning and controlling that outside space? And it's not even fenced in, it has some jersey barriers that anybody can walk right by.
Right. We wouldn't have people drinking outside.
You what?
We would not have people drinking outside, we prohibit it.
But you just asked for a license, you asked for the outside.
And that's what I'm saying, is, we would work with you guys, if that's not what you guys want, then we have no problem confining it to that back room.
Okay.
Where it's a lot easier to keep an eye on everything.
All right, now, your full operation, how does that work? I mean, right now, unless it's changed, and as I understood from last time, I come in and I pay twenty-five dollars, or whatever the fee is?
Twenty, yep. Get a handstand or a wristband, and then you're free to play all the games.
All right.
With no time.
And what if I just want to come in for a drink?
Uh, we're, we're probably gonna do a wristband system, where you have to have either a non-player wristband, which means you can get a drink from the bar, it means your ID's been checked. And if you have the wristband that says you can play, then you can play. So it would be, basically, if you're playing a game, you're having a wristband, if you're getting a drink, you're having a wristband, just the color of the wristband would be there.
If, if we were to issue the license, what restricts it to the back room?
Yeah.
Isn't that going to be a problem for you, trying to hold events where the adults, where they wanna be playing the games, and that's part of it?
I mean, we would, we would just inform them in advance, say, this is, this is how it works, you know, you can get a beer, or a wine, or whatever, but it has to be consumed in the back, and we would have people patrolling, basically, patrolling the front, making sure that, you know, no one's breaking the rules.
Okay, so, I'm still coming back to having a real problem with the fact that the licenses that we have are restaurant licenses, that's what you're applying for. You're not a club, you're not a hotel, you're not a nursing home, you're not a sports facility.
Right.
You're, you're an arcade, you're a, in a zoning, I mean, in the building permit codes, you're an A3, as far as for capacity and so forth. If you get a license, I think you may be changed to an A2, which will change your capacity somewhat.
Yeah.
So it's just, and also, one more time on the hours, Sunday, ten to nine, for food service, I mean, for alcohol service, or just for big opening?
No, ten to nine, to be open, no alcohol service before noon.
We don't, we don't control your general opening, but we do the alcohol, so that's what I want to focus in on, and make sure I understand.
Alcohol, so it'll be new.
Let me just say it again for the third time, no alcohol served before noon time.
Any day.
Any day.
At nine o'clock at night, except for Friday and Saturday, which would be eleven.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can I respond to?
Yeah.
Please, sir, don't be the wait till the end. Whatever you want.
Yeah, if you, if you have some more that you'd like to clarify?
I just want to clarify one thing, we are not seeking a restaurant license.
I know, that's my problem.
Plain and simple, this is a general on-premise application, not a restaurant license. We don't have a CD license.
All we have, no, it's restaurant licenses.
Well, the ABCC allows, this is a, a style of license, it's called a general on-premise, it does not require the service authority.
Well, I have the definitions of the ABCC licenses right here, and they are, as I said, club, restaurant, nursing home, hotel, and then, there isn't anything that, isn't otherwise classified.
I think you're wrong, unfortunately.
And the licenses we have in Nowitz have been approved by the voters, and that we've issued all these years, and on our fee schedule, all we have is on-premise, we also have food, and you have chapter one forty, common vehicle's license.
I, I just, I, I beg to, to differ with you, this is a, an allowed character, classification of a license, GOP, general on-premise.
Well, we also deny, a lot of the denial last time, and we held, withheld, held up on that by the ABCC as well, that the fact that we wanted food, and they weren't providing food.
And now we are.
So that's a discretion, if that's the right word to use, of, of the licensing authority. And that's what we've always required, and that's what I don't see any reason why we would make a change in that requirement.
But we are serving food, you just heard the full explanation of what we're doing.
I'm sorry?
We, we are serving, we are...
Not serving food.
We are providing food.
We're not providing food, as required by the law. It requires you to have a chapter one forty license, they have cooking facilities and everything onsite, it says right on the law what you have to provide, it's showing you the cooking facilities, the layout, the...
That's for a CV, sir.
What that equipment's gonna cost you, that's all required.
That's for a CV license, not a general on-premise.
That's right, on-vehicle license, correct.
I'd like to take the comment from Mr. Dalmway.
It's not to the applicant itself, I think Mr. Manager, Ms. Wood, would have my ability to help confirm this, so I, I do have similar concerns to Mr. Plasko in terms of, this is an all-alcohol on-premises license. I consider, to my term, I consider the arcade, which, you're a good business, you're, you're, the letters of support demonstrate that to us, but I can, my own categorization is that this is more of an entertainment venue, and we have, to me, it, we have a couple of similar venues, if you will, or, or that I consider entertainment, that are licensed, the Magic Room and the Fallout Shelter, which is also located in the same location that the arcade is. Do we know, I think I know the answer to this, but I believe that those two licenses are beer and wine.
Correct, Mr. Manager.
It's not all alcohol. So, you know, that, that remains my concern, that, that, that as an entertainment venue, I think a beer and wine license would be more appropriate for this particular venue. I do share Mr. Sads and Mr. Plasko's observations that an all-alcohol on-premises license is, is, is a good license for a restaurateur, if you will, and I think I echoed that in my first, in the first hearing, and I, I kind of, I think I do remain of that mind as we sit here this evening. Thank you.
I have another question.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris, I, sorry, you know, I, I'm in favor of this, I think, I like the idea. One of the things that I, you had said, restricting alcohol access to the back room?
Yeah.
I'm not, you know, if, if it were to be approved, I'm not sure we would want to restrict it, because I've been to one of these establishments.
Yeah.
Recent, in Indiana, I was in Indiana for work.
Yeah.
And they had one of these, and I kind of, it was in the neighborhood of the hotels, I went in, and they have the cups, like, holders, that are sort of affixed to the machines?
Yeah, we have those.
You do have those now?
Yep.
Okay. But I think that if someone had a drink, and they went to go play a game, they would want to put it there.
Sure.
So that would negate keeping it confined to one area, right?
That's what I was saying, we'd be open to...
Okay.
You know, if you, if you guys had...
I understood, like, the, getting the license would be more favorable than...
Yeah.
You, you would give up that to get the license.
Exactly.
All right, I, I follow you now, yeah. Yeah, and I think, just for me, you know, I, I understand the arguments, and I think everyone's being very respectful, for sure. When you came two years ago, the thought was, I, I think, one of the things the board talked about was that this full license would be better used, or better served from, perhaps, a larger restaurant. Nobody really ever came forward.
Yeah.
So that was two years ago.
Yeah.
So I know it's, you know, I know we're under no obligation to give it, you know, we can hold on to as many as we want.
Sure, right.
But I think in this instance, like, I'm willing to kind of give it a shot, because, to the question of what's changed since those two years, you've done this thirty times.
Yeah.
You know, and the actual events have gone smoothly.
Yeah, sure.
And you've built up this following, these folks that wrote letters.
Yeah.
So, you know, from my perspective, I think that warrants, I would be comfortable with this, but I understand, you know...
Right.
Just speaking for myself, appreciate it.
I, Mr. Plasko?
I was just gonna ask a couple more, and you've already said, if the board said they don't want you to do outdoors, you wouldn't do outdoors.
Right.
But for the record, you've applied for it, and in our last hearing, I, we found, and I personally still find to be true, that you lack any authority to be out there in that, in that yard. It's not in your lease, but it's in your lease states that it's clearly under control of the landlord, not of, of the occupant, so I don't think it's even possible for you to apply and request to grant your license out there.
Okay.
Along with the fact that you don't have it set up the way the ABC says we should make sure it's set up before we, before we authorize. So I think at the very least, if the board considers issuing it, it should be, without being withdrawn.
Yeah.
The food is still the concern. I just don't think it meets the conditions, as we had stated last time, of adequately serving any public need or good to have this license at this location, where it's under the old tannery down off the main streets and everything, without food service, without table service, I don't see what it attracts, and what it benefits to our residents, so I'm not in favor of it.
Just, for your information, I was just gonna bring that up, but I think we have a nightclub of some sort down there, I've been through a couple times?
Fallout Shelter.
The Fallout Shelter. The Fallout Shelter. And I think if we gave them another full liquor license, down the bend a little bit more, somebody else is going on a full liquor license or a liquor license, and these poor residents that live on that street, people will be flying back and forth at nighttime, the condo, there's probably a hundred units down there, I'm pretty sure, the old days. And it's just, I, even though it's a factory, it's been good use for different type of daytime activities, the more we put in nighttime activities, I think it's just a hindrance to the town and the residents, and I just don't see it as the appropriate place for a thirty-four hundred square foot with kids involved on top of it. That's just all my thought was on some of the bills.
Yeah, from my perspective as the chair, I'm with Mr. Plasko on the outdoor portion, like, the lack of clarity over the control in terms of, is this the landlord's property, and you happen to be allowing your patrons to use it, and the landlord says, yeah, sure, it's fine, but it's not actually yours, right? So I would want to confine things inside.
Sure.
The controls around the alcohol, the wristband system and signage seems fine to me, I've been patroning lots of different businesses that have mixed adult and family type activities, and those types of controls are usually what they use, and they're pretty effective, and if you have everyone tip-certified, that's not concerning to me, and the space is enough to...
Yeah.
View over, to see what's happening in it. So I am in favor, however, I do need to open for public comments, so at this time, if there's anyone in the public who wishes to make comment, the chair will recognize you, and I will try to take it in an orderly manner. So I will begin right here, even though I know who you are, I'll have you stand and please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, you?
Yep, you are recognized, ma'am.
Thank you, my name is Toni Esco, I live on fourteen Endercutt Street, and I've been resident there for forty-three years. The entire time I have been out lived on this street, we have been proactive, strong advocates for the responsible and safe development of the commerce center. It's been a long, rocky road, taking decades for the area to finally attain a more safe and respected business situation, where the various tenants and renters can thrive. We called, this is in October twenty twenty, that a cease and desist charter, we put on the place, in order to be looking into compliance. So the current management is more new than the old. It's a location for a variety, and a collectiveness of businesses, and Hometown Arcade is one of them, and we thought it was a really creative business where they embarked, with complete support of the idea of it, and the people and all that. But, because of the rather uniquely off-the-path location of the arcade at the end of Endercutt Street, a full liquor license really concerns us. Restaurant venues or hotels in Nowitz with full liquor licenses are clearly visible, being located mostly in low extended areas on Route One, and are easily viewed or policed. But the location at the end of our street is not like that, it is more secluded. Nor do we believe that the success of the arcade is fully contingent of our full liquor license. The Fallout Shelter Shelter, as mentioned, has a beer and wine license, and we're doing great. Other rental party spaces use daily licenses that they request from this board. It is a serious and long precedent to grant a full license, liquor license, in the end of our street. We do not want to see the area become a lounge hangout. It is simply not the right place or fit for the residential neighborhood that surrounds it. And as alluded to, there are a hundred and twelve condominiums in Endercod, yes. The pavilion across the street from my house on Endercod Street is really beginning to enjoy a lot of frequent visitors, including picnic kids, and children, and dog blockers, sometimes people want to smoke, whatever. It's being well-used, and I am noticing a lot of children, especially the ones who live here, who are growing up and riding bikes and dribbling a basketball. And so, yes, we are concerned about the traffic, and we don't want to add an additional issue of possible drunk and drivers. We already have a lot of speed and cars and all that, so we live with all of it. I don't complain of, and I thank you for the two hour parking signs last year that we asked for, which was very needed, and I hope you will receive the email that was sent today, I'm sure I will return it in the meantime. But this is not about not in my backyard. We think Hometown Arcade is great, we want the painted mural on the wall, we visit, we visit the area numerous times, we have no issue with that, and we are thrilled at the way it's being redeveloped. But it's, we're locked, and you can't change it. It has pretty much, everybody goes up and down Endercod Street, and we are concerned about its rather seclusive nature. And I just don't like the mix of a full liquor license with all the children, it doesn't seem, it's not as new a business as a sit-down restaurant where people stay for a couple hours, they go eating a full meal or whatever while they're drinking. This, you can literally hang out for hours and just drink. I don't want to see that happen at the end of this street. And I think the Fallout Shelter would have every right to want to come forward and ask for a liquor license or another vendor asks for a liquor license. And you're right, they don't own their business, and the owner, as I understand it, the owner and the investors now are newer people, so they don't have a long history yet, actually. So I just want to add those comments to the ones that were already made, and nothing against the owners of the arcade. I think it's a uniquely creative business, but a full liquor license just does not seem appropriate, and a full liquor license would be, as I mentioned, much better used than in a more, a larger establishment, and now it's ripe for development, there's a lot going on, and I'm sure something will come up where that could be better used, be more productive. Thank you.
Further public comments? I guess I'll move from left to right, so we'll start here. Again, state your name and address for the public record.
Cheryl Doyle, twelve Endercod Street. Selectman Plasko, can you correct me if I'm wrong on this? I remember when they came for their first one-day license, Selectman Plasko had gone down there. There was alcohol being served before the time set, and somebody went outside of the designated area, and Selectman Plasko brought it back to this board. When you do a one-day liquor license, it allows you guys to have more control that you can deny when you want to deny. So I, I'm not in favor of a full liquor license being in an establishment that has children in it, and it's actually, if you watch promotional, and when Stephanie posted from other patrons and everything, there's a lot of kids in there. And I don't think, you know, full hard liquor mixes with children. And like Mrs. Esco said, Endercod Street is really dangerous. I go to their house a lot, and sometimes when I'm trying to back out of their driveway, it's like a drag strip. It's like you have to back out on your own accord. Plus, arcades are like Chuck E. Cheese. They screen children, and they kept saying, family, family, family. I believe you, this board should hold on to these full liquor licenses for a restaurant. Bartucci's went out, what, almost a year ago? That's going to be another restaurant at some point in time. It's a very large facility, it's a sit-down facility, they're going to need a full liquor license, and if you give it out to places that don't serve a lot of food, but it's bringing food in, I mean pizza, that's, and chips and all that, that it doesn't, you're not going to keep the alcohol content down. So I hope this board actually votes it down. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Selectman Esco, fourteen Endercod Street. I concur with previous speaker regarding alcohol, full alcohol with children involved in the business of gaming. I know there's adults as well, but it doesn't mix. I remember, I went into an Italian restaurant down the lot then, and we were there, my grandchildren, I let my grandson sit beside me, and he says, I'm sorry, no children allowed to sit at the bar. So to me, that, that stands out right away, saying, you know, here we are, mixing children and adults with a full liquor license, I, I don't, I can't grasp it. The other, the other point, to the board's point, we're discussing it on another issue there, as to how many people would be attending these events in there at one given time. So we were discussing, well, board was discussing, like, a thirty-two, a thirty-two-person restaurant and feasibility of giving a license to such a restaurant that doesn't really serve the welfare of the, of the neighborhood or the business in the area as well. So I just wanted to make note of that, especially with the children and adults. Full alcohol, beer and wine, I can almost accept, but not a full liquor license. Thank you.
Any further public comments? I had two more questions for the applicants. One was, why not seek beer and wine? What is it about the all alcohol that is more?
We would gladly take beer and wine, but it's just not available. I don't know if there's a way to piece it out and give that full liquor to someone who wanted it at one point, and we would take the beer and wine, someone who already has a beer and wine. I don't know if that's something that you guys would entertain, but we would gladly take beer and wine.
You said that we'd be happy to make a brand-new application.
Yeah.
What happened, board?
Beer and wine license, you know, is endemic.
I think that's a different categorization.
Yeah, I think that's like a retail one.
Yeah.
And then the second question was earlier, we talked about the, because even myself, I'm a little, like, the wristbands help, you know, I've been to places like Level Ninety-nine and.
Yeah.
Lot of different places that deal in this type of behavior. One of the things about arcades is a lot of us think of arcades from the times when I was little.
Yeah.
But what has happened is, little ones don't care about arcades as much, it's the adults that care. It's Gen X.
Yeah.
It's your boomers, it's maybe your Zenials if you're lucky, because the little kids, they just want to play on their phone, or they just want to play with a console, they're not interested in tower cabinets, they're not interested in pinball. It's really the nostalgia of the adults. Anytime I go to the trade shows around the country, you go into any of these sort of, you know, temporary arcade rooms, you don't see kids in there, even though it'll be a convention like the Penny Arcade Expo, which has tons of kids, if you go in the arcade room, there's no kids.
Yeah.
Because it's the adults that are very interested.
It's also, it's also quite slow, kid-wise, at night, at the arcade, even on the weekends. Bulk of our, you know, traffic, kid, child, you know, is weekend days.
Yeah.
So, you know, we get, if we got the license, we would try and build up weeknights, weeknights and weekend nights, to where we'd be mostly adults in the room. And I also think that children in arcades with alcohol can coexist. I mean, look at Dave and Buster's. They have issues. And there are plenty of kids in Dave and Buster's, and they have full alcohol. So I think that it can coexist.
One of the questions, earlier, we, you know, talked about the concept, you said, you know, we're willing to work with you, what if we only restricted it back to this area?
Sure.
How much of an impediment would that kind of restriction be on your business model?
I mean, I think people would just be happy to have the option to have a beer, whether, I think that where they have to drink it is secondary.
So even though you have the cup holders, you haven't built your model around.
I mean, we currently have the cup holders for soft drinks.
Right.
You know?
Right.
Just so people don't put them on the floor, and they get kicked over.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we would have people, you know, patrol, so if they see someone that didn't see the sign, or we would say, hey, look, you have to drink that in the back, or like I said, if one stop buys, and there was an abandoned drink, and a cup holder, we have people that would throw it out.
If the board were to impose that kind of restriction, this is more a question to my fellow board members, would they have to reapply? Would they, if they were to agree to restrict the alcohol to the back area, would they have to re-sign their application?
No, we could do that. If they tried to, one of the things was, go for beer and wine, that would be, start from scratch.
Yeah.
But I think, I think they can, we, we under the law can decide when issuing a license, if it can be in certain rooms or certain areas of the establishment applying for the license. So that wouldn't require a new hearing or a new application. Change of the type of license would, and I think they could also withdraw without prejudice the request for the fifteen-hundred square feet outdoor, and then if they could get there, not being wise, if they're acting over the landlord and all that, and actually wanted to do it, they could reapply to add that. That would be a separate step.
Yeah.
But it would be clean, instead of, I think, right now, you've got problems with them. But they could still go forward. Board could wait, issue something tonight, can make some modifications to this.
So that would be my recommendation. I would be in support of a restricted area, because it makes it very clear that we're trying to delineate the children from the adult time as it were.
Yep.
With that, if there are no further public comments.
I just wanted to wind up if I could, but if Selectman Plasko has any questions, I'll wait till you're done.
I'm sorry?
I'll wait till you're complete, I think we both shot our hands up at the same time.
I was just gonna, I was gonna thank Ms. Doyle for bringing up that point, and when I was talking about the other applications, and then that seemed to be very honest or square with us having to deal with the youth organizations, I meant to bring that up at the same time, that you may have a good reputation in running the establishment as a arcade, but in dealing with this board, it's not that good, and the very first one was the fact that the first license we gave you was not being monitored, people were outside the area and the service was prior to the hours that you were given license for. So that's not a good step forward. Your business model, as it was presented to us at your first hearing, and I still have a copy of it somewhere, and I'm going back to my concern about a restaurant and food being served with alcohol. Right in your business plan, your intent was to have food.
Yeah.
What happened to it?
So we're, we, so behind the bar, it would be our, I mean, there's no real place for a kitchen, so we were thinking about applying for like a retail food license, so we have stainless steel. Basically, we have everything right now except for a food grinder, which we have, we just haven't installed it yet, we have the four basic, and we have stainless steel on the walls, so we have an area we can actually prepare food. Currently, we have it.
Okay.
So I guess, may I just do kind of a closing?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank everybody for your time and the individuals who came out. Just a couple of things, there's a lot to digest here. I heard a lot of conversation about the condominiums nearby, that's where our stack of notices is about as big as any I've ever seen in my life. I've been doing this for forty-plus years. Every one of those people was notified, every single person in there was notified, and I don't know whether these folks were on that list or not, but they're not, there are hundreds of people in the room. Public need, I mean, I think there's no better way to define public need than people coming and asking for this, and our letters of support, our families and people, every one of them, I think, every one of them says, I bring my kids, my kids love it, I go all the time, boy, it'd be nice to have a drink if I had them. So, I mean, the public need, I think, is there for you, including among the letters, the state representative for this district is in support of the application. So I think, you know, we've attempted to present a public need argument, which I think holds water.
We get a lot of people every week asking us what the story, what's the story with the license? So as far as public need, we see it, you know.
Most of your public need, if it's, if we're gonna rely on the letters, was from out-of-town people.
I noticed.
Where the letters, does it get authority for the town of Norwood? Our concern is effects on the town of Norwood, and it's a matter of public convenience, public need, and public good, and we have the sole authority on that matter.
The bottom line.
As the courts have all said.
The bottom line of the town is benefited by those people, wherever they come from. They're spending money in Norwood, they're, these people are gonna hire people, hopefully from Norwood, I mean, there are other benefits, right, than, than, everybody goes their brains at some point. You know, the issue of the woman who said people driving drunk and all this stuff going on, I mean, they've got a track record, and other than the incident you referenced, which I'm not familiar with, they don't have any violations, they don't have the police down there all the time, they don't have complaints that it's not being run properly. There's the, there's the track record for you as a board to say, okay, this isn't just, they're telling us what they will do, they can show you what they have done. And I think other than that incident, which again, I'm not familiar with, they have a good track record of operating with the sale of alcohol. They're responsible people, they'll, and they are ultimately responsible, they're responsible if the A B C C come in, they're responsible if the Norwood Police Department comes in, and that's their job, is to oversee that sale and that service. And, you know, if they don't do it, shame on them. And not only shame on them, but there are violations that the A B C C or the town of Norwood can impose on them. So, I mean, again, they've demonstrated an ability to operate with the children there, with the families there, in a way that hasn't caused, you know, this great number of problems, it hasn't caused any problems that we're aware of. But I will say at the end, at the very end, if this board would place conditions on a license, which you can do, of where you would allow service and where you would not, these people are gonna accept that. If this board says to them, I can't vote for this, but if you come back with an application for beer and wine, I could support that. I mean, I just, for me, it's like, I don't want to waste their time and their money and their efforts if it's just completely a no. I guess what we're trying to say is we're willing to be adaptive to what you want.
Yeah.
You know, in that regard, I mean, if this, if this fails and we're told, well, come back and apply for beer and wine. I mean, I think we've had an open discussion, people have said what they like, what they don't like, you know, if that's a direction that you feel is appropriate for us, for us to go in, he said they would do it. He's the owner, co-owner, and he's already talked to his other co-owner, if that's the way that it can be done, we're happy to do it. If it is restricts service areas as conditions on the face of the license, which you can do, we're happy to agree to that. Knock off the outside, serve only in the back, easier to keep an eye on everybody, and easier to control who's being served. So we thank you again for your time and your patience, and you have the willingness to discuss this back and forth, and we're open to a lot of ways perhaps to get these people what they would like to have for their business, and to satisfy the people who wrote in to help, you know, to support them. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. At this time, I don't believe we have anyone else for public comments, so I would entertain a motion proposing a public hearing.
Motion to denounce.
Seconded by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Wayne. Fall in favor of closing the public hearing? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, unanimous to close the public hearing. All right, what is the disposition of the board?
Go ahead, Mike.
Motion to deny.
Motion to deny made by Mr. Sads.
If you're gonna deny again, just as the last matter, we should be specific as to the reasons why we're denying. I would second that, and maybe offer amendment as we see how the discussion goes here on the motion.
I would prefer for Mr. Sads' motion to include the reasons.
Neighborhood doesn't want it, the site is, I think, not compatible for full liquor licenses, being thirty-four, thirty-four-hundred square feet and thirty-five-hundred square feet excluding the outside. I think. I think Launch came in, and it was a mess down there with the kids, a real mess. If David Busters wants to go up next to him, and they got 40,000 square feet with a restaurant full bar, what do we do? Do we go against the neighborhood and say, "We're gonna throw in a full liquor license down there"?
That's your discussion, not the reason.
Yes. I just think that the neighborhood, the facility, the size, is not conducive to a full liquor license. And Bill can add to it.
Size. Just a second, if I could amend to that. But, again, after the public hearing and review of their application, I find that the applicant, as submitted, does not adequately provide a public convenience, public need, or public good, in the opinion of the board. And in particular, the application fails to state the purpose for the license. A license for all alcohol beverages on premises for, under Section 12, requires that the convict be duly licensed under this Chapter 140 to conduct a restaurant, or an inholder duly licensed under such chapter to conduct a hotel, a pub, or a community care, retirement community. I don't find that the applicant has clearly indicated in any way that they qualify under any of those categories. And therefore, it doesn't seem appropriate for a license to be issued at this site at this time. I guess we'll leave it at that.
So, motion made by Mr. Satt, seconded by Mr. Plasko. We have the details. Mr. Donnelly on the motion.
I'm satisfied with Mr. Plasko's outline. I would suggest that we not reference neighborhood opposition, because I think it's unclear to me that there is a neighborhood opposition. Obviously, we've heard from folks from the neighborhood. But to the attorney's point, the butters were notified, and we haven't, to my knowledge, in the public record received a lot of opposition letters, if you will, from the residents, other residents of the area. So I would just advocate that we state the reasons that have been outlined, particularly to Mr. Plasko, but not have the neighborhood reference.
Not referencing the neighborhood.
To be 100% fair, one of those letters was from somebody in those condos.
Any further discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none further, all in favor of denial of the license, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
So, three to two for denial. Right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Would you want us to check, do we have any beer and wine licenses at the moment? Or would you want us to take a look and see if that's an option? Because it certainly applied any time, but take a look and see if there's any options where they might be able to go back and eat beer and wine application.
Yes, I would prefer that.
For my two cents, again, to have an on-premise license, they have to be one of those categories. And unless they're going to put in the kitchen and get a restaurant, or come under one of those other categories, and then there's like club, you're not a club, or you could try that angle. Just coming back with beer and wine isn't gonna change those factors.
For my part, I'm still interested in making sure that we've audited our availability of licenses, so that we're aware about how many of those are available, or potentially will become available.
Would you allow, I will take the book.
Thank you. At this point, the hearing is over. Thank you very much for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
All right, so, of our items left on our agenda for the evening, let's switch back to where we left off.
4.7.
4.7. I'd held this one. Just to make sure there were no additional questions about this, Mr. Plasko.
Yeah, I do have a question on that. It looks generally fine to me. I don't wanna get too nitpicky, but I like to protect the town. Doesn't seem to say anything about if it has to be removed, who's responsible for removing it, whose expense, which clearly should be theirs. I think we need a sentence or two that covers that, added to that agreement.
If you like, so remember that we're licensing them to do this, it's a fair point. We can revoke the license fence material on our land. If you wanna add that to it, I don't think we're.
When you say to revoke it, well, we revoke it, it's.
Sure.
Who says they have to take it down? They can say, "You take it down, you revoke the license."
Sure.
It should be clear in the document.
If you wanna make a motion that includes that, I will get back to them. I don't think they'll have a problem with that.
I'll move.
Motion made by Mr. Plasko to amend.
So you'll still break it back with that amendment?
If the board's okay approving it with that amendment, I would only bring it back if for some reason they have a problem.
Well, you want us to sign something, we don't have anything to sign.
But if you approve it, we'll bring you back for signature.
Right.
Mr. Satt? One more, Mr. Manager. I know we talked about a fence going down along where all the cars are jumping over the park, and then parking like a mess down there. And I mentioned to Mr. Ryan and that group, maybe we should put a stipulation of a fence going along that sidewalk area.
Well, I think that's something we can ask, but remember that this is, they're essentially saying that they're gonna take care of some town property that we don't have to take care of, so there's a benefit to us for that. I don't know that, and again, they're very, we can ask them, that might involve a third party, they're very easy to work with, but what we're saying is, okay, 'cause it's in your interest, we'll let you maintain our property, and by the way, put stuff on other people's property, too. I'm willing to ask them if they'll put up a fence, but I think that's a different ownership of that property, so now.
No, I know, but they're coming over the sidewalk, and it looks like crap down there. So I know, they know what it is. Tell them we looked at the fence down there, and they should be able to put it up, protect their interest.
Again, we would ask, but I don't think that's FM's property, and it's not our property, so it's hard for me to.
The strip that we're looking at is sort of a narrow strip.
Yeah, we will, we will see. I don't, hopefully, I wouldn't recommend making contingent on that, I just don't know to what extent I can compel them to do work on a third-party lot, but we will reach out to that third party and tell them that we're unhappy with the view.
Yeah, if they want it, they want it. They don't, they don't come back and get it.
And technically, if people are parking on the sidewalk, that's not allowed, generally.
They're jumping over it.
So we're seeing that, then we should be able to enforce that.
Maybe later this week, you and I can take a drive down there and.
Perfect. You can buy me lunch.
All right.
Awesome.
Let's take action before it costs me more money.
I prefer the sidewalks to be clear for pedestrians, particularly pedestrians that have access needs, so that is something we can enforce. Without fences, we can just go there, and if people are parking on sidewalks, we can.
Well, they jump in the sidewalk, but I think if you go by, you'll see what I'm saying.
Yeah.
It's a mess.
All right, so Mr. Plasko is requesting that we get clarity on who removes it if that day were to come.
Who acquires, who may be responsible.
Yes, and we want them to be the ones to remove it.
Yeah.
Any other questions or concerns about the site?
Just one question, this is, we consider it's a permanent arrangement if we remove the settlement, and it's not time limited, this is for good.
Correct. And the board always has a discretion, anytime it grants a license of use of land, you can withdraw it any time.
The revoking doesn't have to be because they've done something, we find they've done something wrong, it's just 'cause we now need the property, anything like that?
Thank you.
All right, with Mr. Plasko's change, do I have a motion?
I'll move for approval with the amendment as stated.
Motion made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Plasko. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous. All right, we have, did we already take care of memorandum, or did we jump backwards?
I think we did.
No, we didn't do.
I don't think we did. Because I think we deviated.
Motion to file, file one on five to.
Motion made by Mr. Plasko to file, seconded by Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous.
Madam Chair, sorry, did we do 4.8 as part of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, just checking.
However, if you have additional questions or comments, I'm happy to entertain some.
No.
No. I just, just checking, I just wanted to do a memo.
We're just moving so fast, you can't even keep track.
We have a readout, much information that's done.
Yeah.
You know, just for the benefit, we did approve memorandum, but maybe I can make note of the event that the sheriff of Norfolk County has indicated for veterans during my agenda.
Absolutely. Yes, our agenda, we can feel free to highlight anything necessary. So, speaking of which, that brings us to the manager's update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two items for the board's idification. One, just a hospital update. It does appear that Medical Properties Trust is gonna move forward with the construction of a garage. They are starting to gear up with some subcontractors and utilities on the site. We've been told they're gonna do some additional interior work, we're not sure exactly what the scope of that is. The garage seems to be the next step in the process. We've been engaging them the last few months to continue work, even though the task force does its work, and as both MPT and the state and us, everyone is looking for an operator and trying to reel an operator in, that at least the garage construction is moving forward. So that's a good, good next step in the process.
Great.
And Haas Pool, we're hopeful will be open by this weekend. We're waiting on really one last code compliance issue, it has to do with the gates and the entryways. Both the building department and the health department have a code that has some requirements. I was out on the site today with the building commissioner, the health director, and the project team, so I'll be on the site early tomorrow. We're hopeful that we'll be able to get open this weekend. We'll give everyone a day or two's notice, if we will. It really is just wrapping up some punch list items. Unfortunately, when those punch list items are a code requirement, it's just a safety item. It's just something stupid, it's the gate needs to meet the code by opening and being self-locking and self-sealing, as opposed to being the type of gate you would use anywhere else. But we're hopeful we'll have a temporary solution sometime tomorrow, which will let us open Saturday. If not, next week at the latest, we'll have the permanent solution in.
Excellent.
The contractor will be responsible for installing the correct specified gate that was in the specifications.
Yes. Well, the problem is that the specifications didn't end up matching the code. So even if we step in and say, "Look, we've come up with a temporary solution, 'cause we can move quickly." There is a permanent solution coming. We're hoping that a permanent installation will get delivered this week. It doesn't look like it's gonna be in, or if it is, it'll be the end of the week, and there's a day's worth of hardware work. We think with between facilities and building and health, there's probably a fairly straightforward temporary solution, not something that we would wanna do forever, but something that we can put in place to at least get open and meet all of our safety requirements. It's really, other than that, just testing and punch list items.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I will begin Selectman's agenda. I'll start over with Mr. Satt tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just wanted my condolences for the people in Texas, and the whole thing that happened down there is a crazy sin, but our condolences from Norwood going all the way to Texas, and it's just a terrible disaster. Secondly, I just wanna thank Amanda from Waukesha with me, and we had a little ball going through South Norwood up to the ward and uptown, but Tony and Matt, and we missed Bob and Bill, but our spirits with you. And nobody threw anything at us, it was a great parade, and shout out to the committee and Kevin and all the committee that did a great job. Secondly, I have a good friend of mine, Billy Costello, who's probably watching recent surgery, get well. The Norwood Legion, eight and two, off to a great start. Districts, ten-year-old winners off to the districts. Hopefully, can go to Williamsport with the rest of the crowd. Lights under the bridge, Mr. Manager, from the South Norwood chairman, and benches. We can look into some lights under these bridges in South Norwood. Rowley for the hospital, September 6th, 11 to 11:45 on the gazebo. And Friday, the Kibbie Cup, Joe Curran's son, the Kibbie Curran, having a benefit forum for golf tournament, and should be over 200 players. So Karen and Jimmy, congratulations, and I can't wait to play. That's it, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Satt. Mr. Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In our memorandum for this evening, it included a notice from the Norfolk County Sheriff's Office for Veterans Appreciation Cookout on July the 13th. The office, the sheriff's office is inviting people to a free Veterans Appreciation Cookout on Sunday, July 13th, at 11:30 a.m. at the Rainfree Public Safety Complex at 2,015 Washington Street. So that's open to everyone, and it was in our pack, and I just wanted to make sure that folks knew about that. Concert series kicked off last week on the second, and it continues on through the end of summer tomorrow evening. I just wanna highlight that Summerfest over here at 6:30, the gazebo, we're featuring Roundhouse, to be the second concert of the Wednesday season, and followed by on Sunday, the Roy Scott Band. Program is on Facebook and the town's website, so, and the program is available at Town Hall still, so just a shout out there. I did wanna just, and I apologize that I did not put this in form of a memorandum to the board, but I did wanna just brief the board on the annual performance review process. You know, we have approved goals and objectives for the general manager, we collaborated on that. For FY25, I have met with Lisa Hugh, the HR Director, to discuss the transfer of the responsibilities for that, all that paperwork and collection of data to come from the Selectmen to move from our board to the HR Director to help us administer the program. As we know, September is our timeframe for the annual review, and I just wanted to suggest a timeline, 'cause I know that these things can be very intense for a timing perspective. But I just would like to suggest that, given that we have the goals and objectives, the eight have been defined, we've seen that form recently, that, you know, we asked Tony to just give us an update regarding the status of those FY25 goals and objectives, and that we distribute that summary to the, to the membership. And I think once that's done, I think we can ask Lisa Hugh and Human Resources to route to the members the form that we need to provide our input on those goals and objectives, and for HR to then collect the input and consolidate the input, just as we did last year. In September, the board would be able to deliver a summary documenting that input. I also suggest that, that in August, that maybe we dedicate some time in our August meeting to talk about and define collaboratively with the general manager, goals and objectives for FY26, our current year. I think we get tied up into a lot of processes, and we neglect to get around to that particular initiative until well into the fiscal year. So I think it would be apropos for us to have that on the agenda for one of our meetings in August. Finally, you will recall that last year, in addition to goals and objectives, we had a form to provide detail and data, mostly for development opportunities and purposes for the manager, input on key competencies and skills that we think are needed for a manager to be successful. I'm gonna suggest that we should probably consider doing that sometime in the fall, separated from our timeline now, only from a perspective that we just get so tied up with our summer activities and our, and right now, I think it's important that we finalize our goals and objectives input, finalize our goals and objectives for FY26, and then continue our review processes in the fall. It's a little bit of a change, so, I know that's a lot of information to give folks, but that's my suggestion. I will follow up, Madam Chair, with a memorandum to you, just to, just to put in writing the suggested approaches that I have. So, thank you to the committee for the board for indulging me in the long dissertation on the objectives process. Apologies.
That's excellent. We'll move over to Mr. Plasko.
Thank you. I have one. Several, or few anyhow, months ago, I mentioned that we hadn't closed the loop, if you will, on 20 Vernon Street, in the actual town meeting, manager having to do with a security agreement. The manager sent me some information, which really was information that probably all of us, or most of us saw at the time of town meeting, which was some agreement between the CPC and Caritas. And some may argue that parts of that sound like they might be part of a security agreement, but it's not entirely complete, and the document itself references that the security agreement will be Addendum D, or whatever it was, and there is no Addendum D today. My reason for wanting to follow this up is that the actual town meeting vote said that it have a de-restriction of perpetuity and further to authorize the board of Selectmen to enter to a grant agreement with security provisions for the benefit of the town of Norwood governing the distribution of such funds. My only concern is if this goes south in any way, that somebody doesn't come back and say, "You never did what you're supposed to do." It's probably a very simple agreement, "Well, we should close this loop." And so I'd recommend or suggest that authorize myself, the manager, working, I'm sure it would have to include town council, contact Caritas, and just close this loop and get it done, so we have a document that we can just sign off on, 'cause that's what the town meeting vote called us to do.
If you need a formal motion, I could make a motion. If you need a formal motion, I could make a motion to Mr. Plasko's suggestion for himself and town council and town managers to contact Caritas to, for the purpose of closing the issue of the security agreement.
Motion made by Mr. Donnelly and seconded by Mr. Sad. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
That's it? All right. Come over here to Mr. Blaine.
All set.
All set? All right.
Attaboy.
And Chair only has one small thing tonight. I wanted to just put a little mention in for folks. I'm going to be with our summer time here, since we have fewer meetings. I'm going to see if I can find a couple opportunities to maybe go over, tick up Kerry's invitation to check out some of the Tuesday suppers, because oftentimes, they're on Tuesdays and we're here. So it might be a good chance to go there. So if anybody has an interest in going with me, just let me know, and then when I find a couple of dates that I'm planning on being there, I'll let you know, and you're welcome to come along.
I've heard, I, thank you. I was going to go, I was invited, I had talked to a friend that was going on the 8th, but I couldn't because of this meeting.
Yeah.
But I certainly, I asked my friend if there's opportunity for the 15th, and I would be happy to join yourself and others to that date.
Excellent. Open invitation. Now, we have one last item for the evening, but this is an executive session. It would be for purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining of litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, the chair does so declare. And so we'd be interested in going into an executive session and only coming out of executive session for the purpose of adjournment for open session. So do I have a motion?
This was for litigation?
This is for litigation.
So, motion-
Motion made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Blaine. This is a roll call vote. We'll start with Mr. Sad.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko, yes. Mr. Blaine, yes. And Chair, all of us, yes. Thank you very much, everyone, and have a great evening.
Did I just declare, did I, whether we're going to go back and open session?
I did, I did at the beginning.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you very much.